First of all, yes.
Why is he?
He ain't got no first amendment rights.
I mean, just shut up.
And all I see is money going out of my pocket.
Like, you know. I don't think anybody ever knows. So we have. So this is. It's a hostile environment. So they not heard it yesterday was eleven. And yeah, I was listening to that. It's the dynamics which is just crazy. So that's the round. Yeah, me.
Everybody has that last.
Well, that's what I thought. That's what I heard. I mean, I know she married, but still.
Oh, okay.
Send you one. Send you one. But they say America, she does. And said, listen.
Looks like Rachel Carter.
I'll retain the effort, so. This made me think it would be considered. I'm watching that. Some crap I wasn't doing that stuff I said. Do I ain't playing with you now?
What is it, my aunt Sam?
Two of them is online. Oh, and now you know what happened.
What's that noise?
Recording in progress.
Where? You're? All right. You got mind if I look this?
Yeah, we do.
You want this one here?
Yeah, because we.
Your view was.
Ah, that's why you're little moving.
No, 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 which is the worst thing? It's okay.
I don't care. So we have a call.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening for our council work session. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Leaders Act, chapter two thirty-one P dot L nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was posted on the Borough of Pennsboro Web Bulletin Board designed for that purpose. Notice was also posted on the Borough Pennsboro website at www.pennsboro-inj.org and was emailed to the official newspaper as provided by resolution. Additionally, this March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two work session meeting is to be held in person in the courtroom of Borough Hall, One State Street, Pennsboro, New Jersey. This meeting will be a Zoom online meeting platform. Everyone, please stand. Take your right hand over your heart and pledge in unison with me. I pledge allegiance to the.
We fly the United States of America, from which it stands. One nation, under God, visible through the virtue and the blessings for all.
Madam clerk, can you do the invocation, please?
Give thanks for this day for allowing us to come here. Father God, I pray in your spirit and in this meeting and this governing body be able to discuss and repub the issue for. Father God, we thank you so much in Jesus's name and your name.
Right. All right. Madam clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter. Council President Martin. Here is woman Mancy. Here. Councilman Rambo.
Here.
Councilwoman Warley. You have a call.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brown. Could you just adjust that screen just a little bit, turn it this way? Thank you.
Is that good?
Yes, thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is the bill's list, having motion to approve and adopt. Sorry. So on the motion, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Ma'am, second, please. Second. Thank you. Madam, can you do roll call?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Council President Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mancy.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Yes.
Father, firm, raise your passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of resolution for consideration by consent. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash three dash sixty is a resolution for the family of Oriva L. Thomas.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
The resolutions have to be done separately, so you might want to just do them all separately instead of one.
Okay. Thank you. All right, madam, a motion to adopt. Motion to adopt. Second, thank you. Council President, thank you, Councilwoman Scott Casey. Madam clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Council President Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
No.
Captain Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Yes.
For firm, one may.
Thank you, everyone. Um, that means a lot to our family. Next resolution, two thousand twenty-two dash three dash six one, that's a resolution providing for the transfers of the two thousand twenty budget appropriation reverse. May I have a motion to?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott Casey, may I have a second? Council President Martin. Uh, and we go to discussion, right? So there's. Is there any discussion? Uh, Madam clerk, can you roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Council President Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mancy.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Yes.
Father, firm, raise your passes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, next item on the agenda is introduction and first reading of ordinances. Two thousand twenty-two dash four is an ordinance of the section one seven three dash four, licensing fees for retail purposes. May I have a motion to adopt by title only?
Please, we have a discussion for the public.
Yes.
With regard to this ordinance, the the code of the Borough of Pennsboro allows for certain licensing fees for retail liquor establishments and licenses for retail liquor licenses. We are permitted by statute to increase those fees uh over time, but we are only permitted to increase them in most cases twenty percent of what the prior amount was. So what this does is updates and brings hopefully into line uh the fees that are now currently on our, in our code for retail liquor licenses.
And it's just to add, it hasn't been done. One. All right, Trump.
Long time.
I mean.
Hello.
Just trying to get a number.
Okay, so motion to adopt by title only, Councilwoman Scarpese, may I have a motion? May I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Council. Madam clerk, can you do roll call?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Well, it's. Council President Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mancy.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Yes.
Fire, firm, raise your passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item, two thousand twenty-two dash five, this is a ordinance to convey lot seven, lot ninety-one, AKA four forty-four Park Avenue in the Borough of Pennsboro to Habitat for Humanity, a duly incorporated nonprofit organization for the purpose of building or rehabilitating said property for resale. May I have a motion to adopt by title only? Motion to adopt. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese, may I have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Martin. Madam clerk, can you do roll call, vote?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Council President Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mancy.
Yes.
Councilman Rambo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Yes.
Fire, firm, raise your passes.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Next section, uh section, items for consideration and discussion. The personnel policy and procedure manual, are we discussing that this meeting? I think that was a Councilwoman Ward's. I wish we were to discuss.
I'll just say what she conveyed to me. She's on vacation this week. So I know she had a lot of questions about it, so I had forwarded a sample to Council President and to Sonya, I'm not sure who else was on the committee, but I couldn't make a quorum anyway, so. Um, I, so I guess they're going to discuss it in committee. Because I know she had a lot of issues and she also told me that she was getting the personnel manual for her job to see if there's anything in there that needed to be added or subtracted or whatever. So I know she wants to be like heavily involved in that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm speaking for her.
Okay. Thank you.
She did mention some concerns about it, we just didn't get to sit and talk about what it was.
Okay.
So we will, we can visit that, we can visit that at our.
Okay. All right, next item, Salem County Local Government Dinner Meeting. Madam clerk, could you share details?
Yes, every, uh, well, as you all know, the, you're members of the Salem County Local Government Association. And the fourth Thursday of each month is when uh each municipality, basically take, takes, it's now Pennsboro's time, the hosted dinner meeting. It's the fourth Thursday, which is next Thursday, the invite was placed in your mailbox and sent out to the municipalities. Um, it will be hosted, how they had the Apollo's. Right now, I only, the Apollo's on the twenty-fourth, six thirty P M. And it's the room off from the side patio or from the patio. Right now, we only have one R S V P and that's from Quentin Mayor, uh, Mayor Sperry. So I don't even, at this point, if we don't get a decent head account, I don't know what you guys would. I would suggest just. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We normally only host, I think it comes up maybe every year and a half based off of the calendar. And again, because of Tim Brad, who is the president now of the association and mayor of LA City, uh, wanting to get the ball rolling, so the elective officials can get together and you guys can continue your networking. And everything that you normally do.
Sharon, oh, R S V P of the U S O. So what's our, our updated, um, call?
Actually, this Thursday, it's like to have the count this Friday Thursday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Please, okay. Can you just like that by, you know?
That'd be fine, yes. I'll send a reminder again tomorrow.
Thank you. All right. We are going into public session.
We have more additional items.
We do. All right. Um, Madam clerk, can you scroll forward a little bit? I have an update. Can we talk about the budget?
Right, yes, right.
That's not only here, but that's what. Before we go into public session, you haven't discussed the budget.
Do you, um, uh, could it, may I just add, or do you want, need a motion? So the fact is, just add that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Lab.
Sean will go first and I'll pick it back. Um, I think, uh, I think you go first.
All right. My notes here. Hold on. All right, so earlier today, the CFO, uh, Mr. Lab, B A Brandon, I met with the state monitor, it says that we've gone over the budget information. Now, let me get to the point and say that there are several points of good news that I'm very ecstatic about. So first, we have a surplus for the two thousand twenty-one budget. This allows us to recharge our budget as our state monitor said. And, um, Mr. Brown and Mr. Lab can go over our surplus. Um, also due to the discipline of myself and this council and the administration, our budget is in good condition. It is in best condition that it's been in years. That's talking like that we got today. Uh, we also have a few goals that we want to address through the budget. That includes fully staffing the police department. We have a goal of sixteen offices. We also have identified money in buildings and grounds for landscaping and upkeep of areas that Carney's Point does not manage. And you'll also see money added for rental inspections, you'll get regular updates at the, uh, on this at the future council meetings. Our tax collection continues to improve compared to the last few years at just, just under ninety percent. We're like eighty-nine point something something percent. Uh, last year, I don't have, I think we were at.
That's your figure, we was at eighty-six point sixty-three.
Two thousand twenty-one, and what were we for two thousand twenty?
What, two thousand twenty-one, we got the eighty-nine sixty-four, two thousand twenty, eighty-six sixty-three. And, uh, prior to that, two thousand nineteen, we was only at eighty-three ninety-seven. Eighteen was eighty-two sixty-five, so you see it was an increase.
Yeah.
So as years progressed, our collection rate has increased and it's phenomenal, you get eighty-nine percent. It's really helped out this budget, helped out with the surplus. So when everything went on, when I was doing the figures, working with the auditor and the monitors, I think this was one of the first years I was not too stressed about the budget.
I know.
Sometimes I'm asleep, like, you know, public aid would have that, but it's great, you know, following and they have outlined a monitor, now, when you, um, budget and you don't spend as much in the budget, that's where it helps generate the surplus. You know, through the help of the monitor and the procedure that Mayor and Council implement with the B A, you know, it's, it was a lesson to work with this as a budget. And I can go to more details after yourself.
When I, when I walked into our, our budget meeting this morning and I noticed that you weren't sweating, your mo hop was white.
It was also like sixty degrees in here.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so as of right now, we're looking at a six, six, six cents increase, meaning that the average taxpayer would pay twelve dollars and fifty cents more per quarter. I want everyone to, because at, at first I'm like, why, but the state monitor, uh, went over that with us today. And I just want to inform everyone that we had to make this increase because we are required to make it because we get transitional aid, so if we do not increase our, our taxes, we don't get the money.
And I want to piggyback off of that. Well, with the piggyback off of that, I put up a spreadsheet, so with that six cent increase, that's what we receive, which we have a good, uh, chance of receiving at five hundred and fifty thousand. But with the introduced budget, we can only anticipate eighty-five percent of the prior support. So we introduce a budget showing a.
Thirteen cents?
Yes.
Okay.
And then. As the mayor said, it goes down to six, and that's what it requires, as she says, um, fifty dollar increase, the state's not going to fund anything that's, that is to qualify for transitional aid. It's the fifty dollar increase for average cents, that's kind of the state's rate before, as the mayor said. So like I said, showing a high rate from the prior support. So, like I said, showing a high rate for introduced budget for that with all the preliminary calculations. When you receive this thing, they even all sets of, of course, we'll drop it down to six cents.
Thank you. Uh, we will also have a special meeting next Tuesday, March twenty-second, um, to discuss, uh, to actually pass that budget. Uh, the temporary budget. Also, earlier today, the CFO, B A, and I met the state monitor to go over, um, additional monies that we can get as well. So, last year, we got the, the extra money for the parks and the demolitions. So sorry. Excuse me one second. Um, Steve, how much did we, did we actually get in addition? I can't remember the number.
I believe it was, uh, actually, it was four seventy-five. Actually, I got right here on the budget spreadsheet last year's budget for grants. Four seventy-five.
Yep.
And that's a, that's in addition to the five hundred and fifty thousand in transitional aid. So, we got that extra money, and I always like to reiterate that. And, and the reason why we got that extra money, and we hope to get that extra money this year, is because we are following the recovery plan. So, that's, that's good. Um, let's see. And that's, that's all I have to add.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Right.
What's up to you, you want to meet up, ask to go, or you want to start taking questions?
Um, go, go ahead, Councilwoman Scarpese, you have a question?
Um, I'm looking for the engineering fees on the, you know, the page.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, toward the top, and the. Yeah, it's a, it's a, okay, there, engineering, uh, it's, uh, it's under economic development. About halfway through, uh.
That's on the first page, right?
Yeah, halfway through, so, yeah, thirty-five thousand five hundred, uh, was, uh, appropriate, the same amount as last year.
I just wanted to say that I think that we're going to be using a lot of engineering fees because the new breaks for that trillion-dollar infrastructure business coming through. So, I plan for Public Works to be asking for the grants. And, um, Mr. Smith is going to have to actually spec out all that. Trial will probably get paid through the grant itself, most of it.
You think the grant was also maybe, uh, uh, going towards.
The rates aren't written.
Was that?
The rates aren't written yet, so it's hard to say.
Okay.
So.
Something to keep in mind, too, for adjustments. So, can you do as an adjustment for the amendment process, you know?
I know, this is fully.
Yes.
That was something that, like, Public Works, we're going to pay our bill at the price point.
Right, right.
There's going to be maybe some other small items.
Okay.
But I think the engineering fees might be large this year because we should grab our share of that money.
Like you said, it's a fluid situation, so if, if, if the rates come out, you know, try to come out prior to us adopting a budget, you know, because you are, and it's a long process. That way, if we can see regulations, and it gives money toward engineering fees, and if we think it's going to be more, we can amend the budget, take it in account, we might have money from.
Yeah, but you know, the engineering fees come before any awards, so I think we have to be prepared for that.
Okay.
All right. Can you, either one of you want to?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'm just going to piggyback from you, that's all.
Okay.
So, um, we've been asked, um, so, all right, if you follow the news, a couple of days ago, New Jersey settled with Johnson and Johnson, and it's about to get a windfall of money. Um, so, the borough was asked, um, twice today, a few weeks ago, that if there was more money than the eighty-five percent from the previous year for transitional aid, uh, what, what, what would we like? So, um, and, and the first question was specifically on public safety. Um, so, all the things that Ms. Missy has shared, council, the mayor discussed, uh, we already have a list of these things that was, that was shared. And if we're, if we continue to make the progress that we have with the recovery plan, um, then, then that will be, that, that we can potentially get more money to, to support some of the needs that we have, uh, for our public safety needs. The second is, um, as, as you guys know, that one of the biggest issues that we have here is capacity. So, we also may be able to get more money to flip the position, the, um, the, the clerk, um, that reports to the administrator from a part-time position to a full-time position. Um, with that person being, with the, with the, the way Steve put it to the budget, which makes sense, uh, salary wages is split between, uh, the administrator line item and the CFO line item and the, and the clerk's, and the clerk's line item. Am I, am I, am I in one of your lines?
I just want to piggyback off of that, because that was actually a regulation from the monitor.
Right.
You know, that way, you can have, basically, fifty percent toward the administrator as an assistant, then we need a floater, so we can have a sort of, with work that needs done with the finance and the clerk's office. And it is, so that, that, that's one of the adjustments for, we had a meeting, I don't want to take up your time, but we had a meeting with the monitor, it was additional adjustments that I, that he suggested that I need to then update the figures with the mayor council. I also PDF a copy to Mr. Rambo, who's the caller. Uh, so you have the budget worksheet, I sent you the email, so, the documentation, I also sent it to Sam and to.
I suggest to part-time people that we cut down on our benefit packages.
And, and that, I, that, um, without answering, I'll answer by saying, um, from the administrator, from the administration's perspective, we agree that that one position would be best as full-time. And the biggest reason is because you're going to, we're going to attract a better, uh, a more, a more, a person that has more skills if it's full-time, it offers benefits. I know what the applications are for some of these part-time positions, and we don't pay great. We're paying less than Y W A right now, paying less than Target, so we want to have full-time positions for people to apply.
I, I, that's, I think that's one of the reasons that monitor suggested it.
Just a suggestion, because you might get some retired people that are looking for something to do.
So, the other, the other, uh, another highlight is from, from the, from the question that was asked is, um, and I'm going to, let's, let's put my own facilitator hat on. Is Pennsboro really similar to how it was in nineteen eighty-six, or have there been some significant changes?
But you said like you're asking.
Yeah.
Answer your own question.
You don't need to face them.
No. Right, so the, the zoning, the zoning rules that we go by, uh, were written in nineteen, were, were created in nineteen eighty-six. Um, so, we are also interested in, um, having a, a professional planner, um, take the, 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 the planning board's reexamination, and go through, or the, go through that with a finance code to give, uh, mayor council some recommendations on how we can improve our, ours, our zoning. And from that, we may, um, do something which a lot of municipalities do, which is to identify, uh, you can call them their different quality of life zones, redevelopment areas. Um, but, but right now, you've had the Marina District, two, um, uh, three residential zones, but it's mo, it's mostly just residential one and two. And, and then, um, the commercial area, which is mostly just Virginia Avenue and Main Street. You, we, there may be some recommendations following through, through the reexamination to do things that can spur more growth, and Pennsboro was once for a mile, it was, will be. And when that happens, you want to grow and provide more housing, you can't go wide, so you go high. Meaning that, right now, we're limited for, we're li, we're limited for the height, you know, height requirements, things like that. So, a professional planner can look at all that.
Actually, Remington and Vernon, I think, have some of their skills and handles.
They do.
When they are going to do the.
Yes.
Actual.
And that, and that was mentioned, that, and that was mentioned, but Remington and Vernon, right now, um, reports directly to the planning board, they're, they're a client of the planning board, not of the administration in the borough.
Planning and zoning board, it's a combined board.
Um, and speaking of the budget, um, so as you, as you, as you all know by now, the auction started this morning. And, uh, if you go to the website, uh, well, actually, not if you go to the website, I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you guys the link. But if you, if the, as of ten o'clock this morning, if the auction was cut off, which obviously it's not, it's going to, it's excited for a few more days, if the auction was cut off at ten o'clock this morning, we would have raised, um, three hundred thousand dollars. This is a, this is a remarkable amount of money for something that's not finished yet.
And how many plus?
Um, there are only three, as of this morning, there are three that had no bid. All the other properties had at least one bid. But it, not, sorry, not including the non-conforming lots. There are a few, there are a couple of non-conforming lots, there are a couple of non-conforming lots that have, um, there, there are a couple of non-conforming lots that didn't have any bids, which isn't really a surprise, because not every name is necessarily, you know, has the money or is interested in bidding.
And then I'll piggyback off of that, that was phenomenal for the two thousand twenty-three budget. Because that, you plan to, so, I think that's closer to three times the amount of money raised from the prior, it was like, I'm thinking last year was like hundred twenty-five, now last year a year before, so, that's a significant amount of money to help with next year's budget.
And it, and, um, it's not over? It's not, it's not over? Okay. I like that gospel.
Oh, that's all I had to piggyback off of.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, and, and then I can go into, I, I get kind of a spreadsheet, you know, with my analysis, with the plans import, administrators import, uh, certain transitional aids, you know, uh, with, I think council wanted in this budget, we tried to fit everything in, uh, the plan. And I know, uh, uh, the issue was, uh, landlord license clerk.
We're looking at this, guys.
Yeah, this is, so landlord license clerk, I was putting in the budget also. Talked about the plan, I was putting, uh, uh, budget, uh, an item that, uh, that, uh, I don't know why it's contingent. So, ten thousand, we just put a contingent. Contingent is for an unexpected cost or charge, I really can't put any of the line items. He says it's really good to have in there for an emergency. And, uh, uh, another item was accumulating compensation. That was taken out years ago, uh, and, and that was, of course, ambiguity in the police contract. Saying, if we get paid, maybe, or they don't get paid, or you have to use it up. So, what's been happening with the, with the contract, they actually have been getting paid when you retire. So, what this does is a budget appropriation that's associated to the budget, and, which is I open that dedicated account. So, this year, I went on account, ten thousand, we're here, next year we'll put in appropriation. So, that count goes up this year. So, when we have an officer that retires, fifteen thousand dollars in compensating all time, instead of coming out of a, a budget, it's coming out of that dedicated account. So, that's something that, uh, you know, we have, and it helps us down the road when you have also officers retiring. Uh, there, uh, just Scarpese picked up on that, utilities, uh, what I did, I went over here, and historically, we've been, we're the same one. So, that is almost a zero-based budgeting. We've been transferring, we've been transferring, this is, we transfer is going to be our new budget for, uh, for the two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, that by, I'll just take money from monitor and transfer again, that's what I just do. Uh, so, adjustments with that, houses and old land. Uh, I took in account of, you know, expenditures, transfers, any statutory payment, we have pension payments, we have debt service, that was all in account. So, who went out to do the best budget, I don't know, pull a go, then have any question. We're kind of close, we want to be, add your recommendation, I know there's tweet, tweet, and then, so we went like, hey, hey, this is, you know, look over, say we think, look these highlights over here, US import. As I said, you know, everything's on a statutory time table, and Ed always said, sooner or later, to get at least any dues, we can make budget, and then day. Because what happens, it affects my end, because I really, I can stop, and what I did, I sent out a basic message to all professionals for updates, which are hard to, not be application. The numbers, I cannot stop the numbers, and there's a lot of numbers that you know, application until we introduce this budget, so I'm kind of, I've gone to, uh, and I know other municipalities are doing this, but we're under different circumstances with transitional aid, so we have a lot of new parts. And I was talking at last year, we had an actual five extra days, last year we didn't have to have it until April sixth. So, I'm like, how? Then I look, I said, I just thought, right there, I lost five days, fifty-five days is a lot when you, when you do this. So, uh, they were trying to, professionals, and also everything we bet it with the auditors. Uh, we should go back more, all the calculations are to the penny, so there's no room for ambiguity with, with the rates and stuff like that. So, as I said, we wanted to do the best job for Mayor Council, so they can make an informed decision uh, for the introduction of a budget. But like I said, uh, you know, this was one year I really was losing sleep. You know, I was like, I think we're doing, when you, you know, I think when you do, but then when we seen that, when we're doing financial statements and their collection rate, I, I was, I was pretty happy, you know? So, I was committing to Mayor Johnson, Mayor Council, the administrator, especially Ed, with the plan that he gave council, I mean, everything's really working well, you know, and that's what I say. As a CFO, that means, so that's what, I mean, I mean, uh.
Can you share with everyone how much we have surplus?
Oh, we have surplus, so, for instance.
Compared to what we have?
Yes. And this will help us, because we were able to, when I, when we did the budget, so, uh, for instance, how to help us out, maybe, a quick example, uh, okay. So, the surplus from two thousand and two was able to use somewhere in two thousand, uh, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. And it's spread out twelve thirty-one, two thousand forty, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Honestly, we, uh, just even, I don't have any sense.
Six ninety-nine, yes.
Yeah, another thing, I don't have any sense.
That's fine.
Two thousand twenty-one, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, as you can see, we generated surplus, how that helped us with this budget. We was able, last year we used five hundred and seventy thousand to support the two thousand and twenty-one municipal budget. Five hundred and seventy thousand out of surplus. Now that had six ninety-nine, in the twenty twenty-one budget, we used five seventy, okay? Since we generated surplus for their various actions that Mayor Council did, you have eight hundred and thirty-nine. But to help the two thousand and twenty-two budget, now, well, then, it's making six hundred and twelve thousand. That's still being cautious, because one thing, people say, oh, you got the surplus, what's, what's you do all? That is bad budgeting, because you need money, you have to go get next year's budget. And also, if you use all that, how much do you think that's just so enabling you? And, and, and then you start with zero, it's always a balancing act of, you want to be conservative, so you. And also, we did have the collection rate, so, it's up a pulse up. So, last year, we used point eight-five, five percent to support the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Okay, that's our, the liquid tax reserve, that's reserved for during the taxes. Okay?
Eight percent.
Uh, tax collection, this year we used point, yes, point eight-six percent. So, we was able to go up point oh four five, that makes a big difference, you know? So, that helps drop down the rate, so.
Do you have a comparison of the rates from the early D two?
Oh, I, I see, right, going down a little bit, but of course, we did so well, and really affect this year's budget. Uh, let me see, last, I would have to look at last year's rateable, I don't have that on the spreadsheet. You go out, go down a little bit, rateables.
And how much is a penny?
A penny, 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 penny. It'll be thirteen thousand dollars roughly, you, you take your.
I think that's about the same as last year.
Yeah, it's, we're pretty close.
Yeah.
So, like the segment, then everybody, uh, you know, and following with the state monitor and the programs that we have in place, because you can see the outcome, and, and it's, and it's, and it makes this process much easier for Mayor Council, be able to get more items to the budget without taxing taxpayers, so it's really a legitimate situation. And you really see how poor that collection rate is. And that's your surplus for Carney's Point, it's paying dividends for the tax collector, because if you, uh, for, for example, when you have to do budgets, this was years, we had a couple of years ago, and, uh, we have been, to the, we had a, uh, decrease. And then from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, a decrease, then we had a three percent decrease. All that we had, what you had to do is use an average tax rate. By not using an average tax rate, you, you have to, you would use what's collected, you would map that out and infer burden on the taxpayers. Once you average it this year, but you're taking out the big age year, that's all this year. So, you're not putting much of a burden onto the taxpayers for rough times.
You're, you're beefing up the, uh, housing.
Yes.
Safety, that should bring in some more money.
Yes, and that's, I actually talk about the offsetting revenue, which was last year. So, we, which we, thank you, we put this out here in, uh, twenty-five hours a week, uh, that's what I, I figured out.
How much, how many people are on that department?
Yeah, we have, we have four.
Zoning, street enforcement, which are five, one zoning, two paid enforcement, and two, uh.
The zoning, we have a zoning official, okay. You, it's.
So you're gonna have people that are some of those things to zoning to?
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, yes, so that's one combined salary.
Same thing, that, same thing that, uh.
I, I know. Because in the revenue center, if we staff it. Newspaper, so.
Yes. But theoretically, that's a real ball to give him, he's especially set the salary.
I, I, I forgot my payment.
That's what that budget was talking about, the landlord license, example.
Yeah, though, I would say that's the position that you referenced, once you time. Uh, don't. I would say don't like the, the, the. Let me finish, let me finish.
Yes, yes.
Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna either over or under discuss this, let me just tell you two things that we're concerned, so one is. Uh, you guys probably know this, we have eighteen hundred households in Pennsylvan. According to the reexamination, sixty-five percent, I, I don't remember sixty-five percent of people or sixty-five percent households, but either way, uh. Our, 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 our renters. What we're doing right now is we're, uh, Mr. Tarver, our attorney, is reviewing. Reviewing several issues that are related to landlord tenant, the powers of the housing inspector, of the zoning officer, of code enforcement. Um, we al- also would like to, again, encourage council to, 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 to be a part of reviewing. Some of the ordinances, ordinances that we had, not just for, uh, but, um. There, there's work that needs to be done there in terms of, uh, enforcement, some of the ordinances say only the police can, can enforce. And we want some of those powers to be extended, both of course, or the housing inspector. Um, with, with, we, we, we aren't in place to do it. Efficiently yet, but once, uh, it's, once the software comes to the. That's what we'll use to manage this process, if you go to, go to Cherry's website and look at their. Their landlord registration page on our website, you'll see, go all the way down, you'll see S D L. Oh, you're right, this is your conversation, you're right, you'll see, uh, S D L is a bottom for landlord registration. Um, which shows, whi- which, which is a, is an online format, so it's a bit of a mess paperwork for us to process. But anyway, with, with, with a new person starting, with a new person starting, um. In, in a conscious effort to examine and improve our systems, this is in the, in an ex- in an extensive review. I can share this with Mr. Rambo and Housing and Zoning Committee, uh, Mr. Tarver is going to have an update for all of us. Uh, more likely by the April, by the April council meeting, um, and I think everybody will feel more confident that we are working towards. Tools and the processes in place, too. Hold landlords accountable for what they're supposed to do, make sure landlords and tenants are aware of what they need to do. Um, and make sure that both code enforcement and our inspector know what the rules are, and have the proper training to do it properly as well. And it, it, this is, this is a process, so we're not going to get to optimum probably several months. But I, my prediction is by May or June, we'll be at a really good position on, on how, on how we're doing this.
I think we need. Approved for interviews, and I have to add background and credit tracks to our hiring procedure in addition to references. We need to come out and hire in somebody and find out that we got a problem.
What we're required to give a background check for all of the employees.
Is that typical to.
Involved in those.
The landlord licensing, C P's, C R's, and things like that.
Um, I mean realistically. There's a way for them to, to, to do those jobs without actually. That, that's probably the best. I think supplement is a way, anyway.
So it's one of the things that we have written up for, is not having that separation duty or not, not handling. Landlord's trying to write.
There should be no hand, handouts.
Yeah, it's over, you hear about that everywhere. Anything else? Any other question?
So, I, I, let me say that, um, I forgot to mention this part, all staff, all staff, um. Were asked to submit their budget requests. Um, any committee that between now and the twenty-second that wants to. You know, go over any of the details in this, and figure out how some of the respective departments can, is, is, is encouraged to do so. Um, I think when the twenty-second, no, we don't need a public hearing, right? Yeah, so this is the introduction, not the adopted. Right, so there's, there is a, there is, I, I won't even get into the details now, uh, y'all probably, you guys probably heard this every year. There's a difference between an introduced budget and an adopted budget, this is the introduced budget, it's not, it's, it's, um, etched in stone. Uh, but it is definitely, it's fluid, right, but it's definitely, you know, the starting point of how we do things, um. We, some of the things that happened in my partnership with administrator, issues that had really been. Like on address, we didn't have to keep, keep personnel, like, some of these, we spent money on in twenty twenty-one. We don't, we won't want to get in twenty twenty-two, let me give you an easy example, you know, just look up the roof. Well, I came out from carbon, that doesn't count, but the, um, like the inspection that, at the, uh, at the, at the fire station, the ambulance, all. That's money, that's coming out of operating money, that wasn't grant funded or anything, well, we got the new door. That, that door is going to last three, forty years, we got emergency light, that's going to last for thirty, forty years, the L A lights, so those are one-time hits. Um, yellow, yellow here, uh, uh, we, you know, we just, we get invoice on that, again, that, that's something that, once it was fixed, it's fixed, and it should be. It, it, so. The way we spend money this year will be different, and, um, the, the, uh, as, as an administration, we'll do a good job of working with your respective committees. Uh, understanding what the expectations are, of, of, of talking about that, uh, talking about what that, those things are, but the expect, and I, I don't want to, um. The, the mayor suggested the twenty-second, but, but I just wanted to be clear for my own calendar, it okay with everybody? For the budget. Introduction, that'll be a special meeting, that wouldn't necessarily be a person, right, you could even.
Well, you have the majority, you know, so, um.
But, yeah, because I. That's the thing when we agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's what. Yeah, because you don't have a public hearing on that, it's just, uh, you know, all going for the introduction of the budget, that, with that, the deal will mine with the. Transition aid, with input of the professionals and the other things that happen to you, to get ready to get to the state. So with that introduction, definitely statute of compliance, uh, scheduled. To help you out with applications.
So was that a, that the twenty-second? Six thirty, right?
Not exactly, because we had our own internal process for this, so. So, like, it's like. Ri- you know, the director of the police department, he had his, he had the opportunity to say, remember that. It's not ninety percent, it's probably eighty-something percent of what we spend in salaries and wages, so the money is, the money is sitting there for, for six, for having sixteen fully staffed officers. That money is in the budget, that, everything else is, um, you know, is resources and things the police department needs. But, uh, like, one, like, probably the biggest ticket item is a new car, that's, that's reflected in the budget. Some of the, uh, like, you know, and, um, I shared your, I shared your email, uh, this makes you with, uh, Mr. Lab, which is something, some of the, uh. Uh, requests or concerns from the, from the department, all, all already represented in the budget, you know, in this budget, you see what it is, you don't see lot. You don't see very consistent line items on here, that delineate things, uh, but if you want clarification, we're happy to do that.
Well, that's why I just want to make sure that, um, what's supposed to be given to you, if it's, you know, I don't know what he's already given.
Well, this is, so just because, uh, for other reasons, we neglected this information from, from, um, the, the departments anyway. So when I, so when I took the word out, it asked people, you know, what are their needs for this new budget? It was really just a continuation or repeat of things that we're already aware of.
Okay, so, I'm not, I know I'm not on this committee, but do we have, um, the blackboard in here on this budget somewhere?
Uh, that's. That's not, that's, that's probably the same thing, that's probably the same, but, yeah, we already, that, that's just, that's interesting, that we just have, we had that money, we just have to buy.
I remember that you said that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, no, it, yeah. Just the language, we should, this is called mass communication, because blackboard is a better, so it's, but it's mass communication, it's something like that that we refer to. Refer to it as.
And, uh, for calculations, uh, for police side wages, wages, that's true, but also, of course, you have a lot of conditions. Uh, so, for instance, I'm prorating salaries, I took the steps line, optimism, Rivera, okay? I'm like, people in this step, if they have this much experience, so everything's prorated, and also, uh, I'm very cautious. So I'm conservative, where I said with overtime, so what we spent last year was probably hundred ninety-three thousand, put in two hundred thousand, not. I was saying, when it's fluid, everything changes, so if you have staff members that we want, overtime is going to be harder. But if you have the staff, that's where you have some play with the, so. Uh, very conservative with the police department, I know short, actually, if I was out, I was a little bit more, because I really know what's happening. With the hire market and so forth, so I do my best calculation with the preparations, with the stats, with the overtime, looking at all expenses last year. Make a good, solid estimation.
And you anticipated the increase from transcript gardens and the extra money that.
No, that's not even in here, that's.
So that's a little question.
Yes, 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 so.
That's why we're happy, yeah.
But that was even thinking about that, I was thinking about, okay, without any, uh, extra grants, as a municipality. We're, we're, we're working with, and what we have to fund with the revenues, the surplus, the catch rate, transitional aid. Everything else is great, so that's not even factored into this budget.
Can't get too much, can't go up that age yet.
Yeah, 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 well, that would be a step back.
But that's, but that's a, some of that is a one-shot deal to one count anyway.
Like, for instance, you know, I think, yeah, I know, no, I'd like to see increasing, but it's just almost like a, a leisure bill increase in, uh, fifteen dollars. So, 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 like, I want to go on to forty dollars, forty dollars difference, a ten dollars difference, not going to be funded from transitional aid. That could really happen between surplus, by doing that, you lessen your surplus for next year's budget, so that's, that's ten dollars, in the scheme of things. Might have a twenty dollar, twenty dollar increase over the top next year, so you don't want to do that.
That's, that's the. Will you move into public session? All right, we're going into public session, if anyone from the public has any questions, or you want to. Minutes, the name and your address, we can step up to the mic, anyone from public session?
I just wanted to, uh, to thank, um, mayor and council for the donation of the, um, property to Habitat. Uh, really appreciate your consideration.
Guys always do a good job.
Try, and there's, you know, it's becoming a very nice neighborhood, I think. With a lot of cooperation and.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening. Ron, you're down at Sunset Avenue. Uh, I was listening to a couple of things before. The C O, the officer and, uh. Getting the, together, money. And to work with the landlords. My suggestion is, we have a new store neighbor. Who already has everything like that in place, and are doing a top-notch job, that they have, the ordinance is already in place. They have the money situation handled, by the way, none of the officers handle any money. Money's all handled inside, in the office, in, in the borough, so that eliminates any problem with that. So I'm just suggesting, get together with your neighbor, I got how they're doing it, you know, rather than trying to figure it out. Ourselves, got somebody there who can help us, and getting that all, sit, we'll save a lot of time. Um. What else is, what, did I want to say, uh? The, oh, um. If you want, you're a road. Um, do we have in place with our neighbor as part of potholes? That they're supposed to repair the potholes, is that in the contract?
We do have with the mayor and council, you know, we do have an agreement that they are supposed to do that, however, what, what I have, um. Tried to make sure that we're able to do is to actually identify and differentiate what are state and county roads as opposed to. So our agreement with them is one being for the ones that are borough roads as opposed to state county roads.
All right, we're actually nothing so far in the town as far as I'm doing it, I have a suggestion, uh, moving forward with that. There's that infrastructure bill that's just been passed by the government, a lot of money there. Why don't we see about getting a grant that would be big enough that we could hire just two people? They're used dump truck, they're used trailer and a roller, and we could do all that work ourselves. Rather than that have to depend on them, and screaming no to them about getting things done. And I think the town would really love to see those holes starting being patched up, if we can get that money, like they stopped there. With all that infrastructure being passed, there's a good possibility we can get for that money.
Can I, can I take that now? Two things, in our contract, um, we pay for a certain level, so. What we have to do with potholes, uh, a list of them, we can put in a work with them. I'd like to go over that amount, because they charge extra, and ask where the infrastructure bill, as soon as the regs are written. We're going to be there.
Feel that, I know it's going to take a little while for that thing, what we can do.
If you have some that you think we haven't used, uh. What they do is, the contract is right back, we have a certain level of service that is included in the base amount. Once we use over that, they start charging us extra, so that's when you get your full bid. But we haven't used anything in the, uh, basic level service yet, so if you have some that are bad. Give me a list, because we have to put in a work order.
I could really give you a list.
I know, but I don't want to do more than our base amount, because then they start charging us, and you know. There are now that they charge us over that amount, we might be better off. The amount that you charge us over that amount, we might be better off going out contract.
And one of the.
Yes.
Yeah. One of the other things that we have to get, um, better with and kind of set up a better system is, I guess the councilwoman ruled to a notice, the ability to notice, uh, the administration about where these particular potholes are. So we need to make sure that, that we set up a system and that's something that I'll, I'll work with the administration on setting up a system that becomes very clear that in individuals, if they see these potholes and identify them, and then we, we have to do, uh, you know, in an efficient manner. All the times these things not getting, because they're not getting, uh, properly noticed. And that's what, what we have to make sure that we're able to do.
We have to put in a work order.
I understand that.
Yeah, they're not just going to go out and do it.
No, I understand. I remind that. But there are some of these potholes that I know that they could do damage to a car. So.
I just had a thought to discuss, just hit me. I, I thought I'm sorry. We should write that out as a reserve account. Cause what I'm thinking, if we don't use that money, this is not lapsical exploring. But if.
Pay that base amount no matter what.
Right. But if I need, I'm going to set aside into reserve account. So say we didn't spend anything in two thousand twenty two. Whatever I'm paying out is their account.
Yeah.
Understand that way, because what happened, it's. And I just thought about that, we were talking about that. So it's almost like I can't even account for that. So we really need it. If not, guess what?
That's not a bear.
Because that's one thing this town has been struggling with is all. People would love to see something getting done. Now, I want to also address John Ramo. There's the truck that we, that I remember Joe talked about, you were going to knock. And that's since last year.
You can go ahead.
I'll just wait till the next meeting.
You know where we are. It can come from.
I understand, but I'll wait. Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to, uh, want to pop in conversation. I just want to clarify a few things. Because I've, we've successfully dealt with this in the past. Uh, so a few things first, I want to be, first, I want to be very clear on this. Complaints and work orders go to the administration. I am the only person that is authorized in our agreement with Carney's point as the administrator to submit work orders to Carney's point. What happens when other people send emails and it, it gets murky? We're not able to keep track of what's going on. Um, I sent several work orders to Joe Santagraci, who's the director in the last few days. And he's very, he, he, the process has changed when their VA left. He's responsive. Yeah, he's, he's responsive. If the answer is no, he tells me why. Uh, I can, I'm happy to update the public works committee on that. The other thing is, um, we're complaints. So the website, the new, Pens where website has a complaint section that is occasionally used that those, um, the recipient of that is Tracy. She then forwards them to me, sometimes sharing, depending what the issue is. And then between us, we, we, you know, we deal with it, whatever, whatever the case is. The third point is, don't forget that. And I, and I know, I, I believe Mr. Janos specifically referring to maybe one pothole on a street that's otherwise fine for, for Philly. But we also, um, every year we apply for small cities, money from the Department of Transportation from the state. And we get streets that are really bad paid. You did an exercise, I don't know, maybe the summer where you asked the public, what we, what they think the worst streets were. And then, um, Mr. Smith then submitted that. I forget which street it was.
Penn.
What was it? Penn, okay. Then we submitted that information to the, um, to the DOT because we, that's, that's pretty much a grant we, 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 we get annually because, because of, because of, because of, because of our sauce.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Can I say this? Mr. Tucker, we have five streets, maybe six that we know. Um, county and state. So Carney's point shouldn't have a problem with that. I'm sure they know.
There's six county.
But, um, we can give you a list of they, they, but they did, I did see a couple of patched. Where they patched up that. Only problem with, they don't never give us a list of what they're doing.
Well, they, they, they're not supposed to now.
Well, that's good because. Got patched out, they don't worry the street. They could have let the kids do it. All you got to do is go and look and you'll see what I mean. So, you know, but yeah, so they need to just let us know. But and, and on that note, they are, in the next month, I think it is, they're supposed to do Penn Street. Because they've been down here doing something for past two days.
John Scott Basie, railroad avenue. Um, well, I'd like to reflect on one other thing for, uh, Ron, you're there. He mentioned the truck for Mr. Rambo. Uh, he also has a trash can also. So, you know, you might want to check with him about that also.
Oh, that trash can that was burned up or something down?
It was a trash can. It was a. Yeah, there were two and now there's just one, but, uh, I believe he took and was going to repair it. I started like the truck. I had a little incident, um, not long ago, that I think I should bring up to Mayor and Council. And, uh, it seems as though there were lies put out there about me. And I, I went as far to get, uh, all the evidence I needed to prove me right. And, uh, it seems like Mr. Sean Brown, uh, tells a lot of lies, including this one.
One thing we're not allowing. One thing that the mayor has been cleared, and I have to be part of, we cannot do any personal attacks even. I think you can say what you want to say without.
Oh, but it was okay when they personally attacked me over here? That was okay? Oh, I see. It's a crazy rule.
No, it's, it's, it's just.
I'm not trying to.
No, well, wait a minute.
I'm not trying to. What I'm saying is I can't say what you want to say without calling someone.
Well, today, we're stopping today. Just, just say what you need to say.
Always start today.
You don't sit on no board. You don't sit on nothing. It's all you're saying.
You got to do some homework.
Okay, that's it. That's it.
So Mr. Brown.
You can't follow the rules.
Okay, one last thing, one last thing. Has lost confidence in the mayor, Mr. Tarver, and Mr. Brown. I just want everybody to know that.
Ken, you said Ken's probably lost confidence? That's.
Yes.
Don't believe that.
Thank you for that information.
Reg Marvill Spruce Street, Penn Grove. Penn Grove is not one or two or three individuals. Penn Grove is a borough. I think you know that you got much more support in Penn Grove than you got people get you. Just keep doing what y'all doing.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. All right. We are going into executive session. Madam motion to go into executive session?
So I'm sorry, but, um, you had to just, you had to reallow the, the purpose.
Oh, yeah. Resolution, excuse me, two thousand twenty two dash three dash two. This is a resolution authorizing executive session. Now that it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Penn Grove will go into closed session to discuss the following. In accordance with aforesaid provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, after which it will reconvene in the public. Matters relating to litigation and attorney client privilege pursuant to New Jersey statute ten, colon, four dash twelve B, seven. Point one, discussion of Hudson versus Borough of Penn Grove. Point two, discussion of Scott versus Borough of Penn Grove. And point three, discussion of Riley versus Borough of Penn Grove. We have further resolved that the minutes of the closed session will be made available to the public when the need for privacy no longer exists. Thank you. We did a. Oh, the motion was made by Council President Martin and Councilwoman Scarpini. Do we need to do roll call?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Can you close the door? Council President Martin.
Can you close it now? Can you close it now?
Councilwoman Scarpini? Yes.
You're on a closed session yet?
Yeah.
Still got people.
Yes.
Five, four minutes, you're fast. Thank you. Uh, hold on, we got to, everyone in the waiting room first. No one start yet?
Can we?
Just so you know, that's your mic for the audience.
This?
Okay, when we move down for you?
Councilman Carter and Councilman Ramo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, but let me tell you, the audio was very poor.
Say one, two, three.
It's, how, how's this? Councilor Ramo, how's this?
Well, it's good with you right there.
Okay, well, I'll stay right here. We're not going to stay right here.
No, they're not. It's not. You're good, you're good.
I'll stay right here. After he finishes zipping the fourth zipper. I've never seen so many zippers, right?
Make a mention of adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpini. May I have a second? Everybody.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Miss Mince, I need sixty seconds. As soon as he moves over in the chair something.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, to everyone.
Have a good one.